All right, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Gazacik? Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two.
Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Reverend D. Grady Scott from Grace Temple Missionary Baptist Church. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, you've been our dwelling place in all generations. Before the mountains were brought forth, Reverend thou had formed the earth and the world. Even from everlasting to everlasting, you are God. We come before you this day thanking you for yet another opportunity to do good on this earth that you have given us. And we ask you now that you would be with us in this meeting, that you would guide the leaders of our community, that their decisions would be wise decisions, and then help us as citizens of this city to support not only them, but to support the work that they are doing. We ask you to watch over them and keep them is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two C.
Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions: Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 31, dated February 5, is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the appointment of Leania Sloan to the El Presidio Historic Zone Advisory Board. We have a second. Is Ms. Sloan present by any chance? No? Okay. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. Let's go to item three.
Mayor and Council Report: Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 32, dated February 5, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the Mayor and Council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted... Excuse me. Yes, Your Honor. I just wanted to make some acknowledgements. In the last month, we had a government shutdown. We had a federal government shutdown. And the... The response of the community was incredible. United Way, along with the Community Food Bank teamed up to ensure that families who were not receiving paychecks during that time were at least able to feed themselves and things of that nature. One of the interesting things that happened along that discussion was we found out there was this contingent of workers, mostly at the airport and some other places, that were actually still working. They were having to go to work without being able to collect a paycheck. Basically, the equivalent of saying, "Hey, pay me when I pay me. I got you." And I thought that was pretty heroic. We didn't have a sick-out problem in Tucson. We had some federal workers who basically for 32 days said, "We get it." When I spoke to their... Their... One of their leaders, their supervisors, Charles Sparks at the airport, he informed me of kind of all the situations. And thanks to O'Reilly Chevrolet, Crest Insurance, Nova Home Loans, Finley Beer, the Community Foundation, Southern Arizona, and Quick Mart, they were able to have a gift card for a tank of gas because they have to drive to and from the airport not getting paid for that month. And so those community partners stepped up and were able to do that. So I wanted to thank them publicly. I thought that was a really first-class thing to do. And that's what makes Tucson a first-class place.
Councilmember Durham.
Thank you to everyone who came out to the New Year Open House at the Ward III office last week. We had over 50 people from across Ward III and around the city. Special thanks to TPD's Midtown and West Divisions for attending, and most importantly, to Taqueria Punitos for catering. It was delicious food. See you all again next year.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, February 5, is the Chinese New Year. I want to wish the Chinese community in Tucson a Happy New Year initiating the Year of the Pig. For the first two weeks in February, more than 56,000 guests are gathering in Tucson to participate in the 65th Annual Tucson Gem and Mineral and Fossil Showcase. The event featuring minerals, gemstones, jewelry, and fossils runs through February 17 at more than 45 locations throughout the Tucson area. The city of Tucson and its partners are again offering Gem Ride, the shuttle service that connects convenient downtown parking locations to the Mercado and Keno parking hubs with 43 of the gem mineral and fossil shows around Tucson. The shuttle full route covers 36 different stops, running from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. through February 17. On Saturday, February 2, I had the privilege of recognizing the Tucson Youth Football Rams, who won the Tucson City Championship Under Eight title. Congratulations to the Rams, their coaches, players, and their families, supporters, on their title and being Tucson City Champions. On Saturday, February 16, 8:00 a.m., a spay and neuter clinic is taking place at the Quincy Douglas Center, 1575 East 36. It is the first come, first served, and there will be spaying and neutering 45 pets, who will also be eligible to be microchipped. For more information, call 245-8286. On Thursday, February 21, the 94th Annual Fiesta de los Vaqueros Rodeo Parade will take place in Ward 5, starting at 9:00 a.m. This year's grand marshal is Guy Ashley, former Kegon Channel 9 news anchor. I'm glad that several of my colleagues on the council will be joining me in the parade this year, and I hope to see everyone at the parade. With the recent federal government shutdown, there were many efforts to help those Tussanans who worked for the federal government and who were furloughed without pay. One of those efforts was to get business, is to step up and get gift cards that were given to federal employees who live in Tucson. This effort was done by Ward II Councilman Paul Cunningham, which I wanted to acknowledge and thank him for his showing that Tucson is a giving community. Ward 5 resident Peter Norbeck has started an effort to help the animals that are at the Pima County Animal Control Center. Norbeck is collecting donations every Sunday in the Miles neighborhood based on PAC's buying power of 90 cents per pound of pet food. In one year, Miles has donated more than 250,000 pounds, which is outpacing their start at goal. Peter Norbeck is looking for volunteers in the other 130-plus neighborhoods who would like to start their own rescued critters food drive. For more information, you can call Peter or email him at pnorbeck, N-O-R-B-A-C-K, at Cox.net. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item four.
City Managers' Report: Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 33, dated February 5, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the City Manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item five.
Liquor License Applications: Report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 34, dated February 5, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, in this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have one request for new license. Under item 5C, we have five requests for special events. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. An appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B1 and C1 through 5 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and second. With regard to the liquor licenses, any discussion on those matters? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That motion carries. Let's go to item six.
Call to the Audience.
This time, any member of the public is allowed to address the Mayor and Council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call of the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Airs and Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask City Manager to review a matter, ask them to replace it on a future agenda, or respond to questions made by speakers. However, the Mayor and Council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. Let's see if we got another card here. We do. All right. So we have 11 cards. Nine of them relate to complete streets. At the last... Yay! At the last... Go ahead. Round of applause. Round of applause. At the last council meeting, this council, Mayor and Council, voted 7-0 to forward the policy that we have on tonight and the exact wording for a final ordinance. So that may give you some sense of what you may or may not need to do tonight. But that being said, I will call... I'm going to take the two cards that aren't related to complete streets first, and then I would ask you, as you hear your fellow proponents, if you've heard the same thing, you know, over and over. Feel free not to say it again. All right. So we're going to start with Debbie Frick. Debbie, if you could come forward.
Here.
Use the top one, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening. My name is Debbie Frick, and I've been living in Tucson since 2002. One of the attractions to Tucson was the affordable housing cost... The affordable cost of housing. As someone who has retired from work and is unable to work due to health issues, I had long given up on the dream to one day own a small home of my own. But in Tucson, I began to dream again. Even someone in my position, I thought, could quite possibly one day own a small home in this community. This dream is impossible now, and just having a roof over my head has become more and more challenging. Three years ago, I moved into the apartment where I currently live and call home. Two years ago, the rent increased by $25 a month, while my income increased just enough to offset an increase in medical insurance premiums. But I decided to cut back even further to a bare-bones budget and stay in my home. At the end of last year, the apartment complex was sold to a company in Florida who, according to newspaper reports, has been buying up rental properties in Tucson since at least 2012. Rent increased again by $50 a month, while my income increased by 49. When I moved into the apartment three years ago, the market value for this apartment was $525. I have been advised that today, just three years later, it is $695. With increases in all other expenses, I am now in a position to have to swallow my pride and ask for help to find affordable housing or help paying the rent. I recognize that I'm now in a position like others I have heard on TV. If I get really sick or hurt, I do not have the financial resources to receive medical treatment. I feel frustrated, angry, humiliated, but mostly, I feel really, really scared. My City Council Representative's Office has provided me with possible resources to look into. I asked the person I spoke with in that office, the mayor, as well as Mr. Freeze... Dr. Freeze, what can be done about the phenomena of out-of-state corporations coming into Tucson, buying up rental properties, and jacking up the rents? The response was essentially nothing. While I accept that what these corporations are doing is not illegal, I do not accept that nothing can be done. At the 2019 Winter Conference of Mayors in Washington, DC, the mayors of Philadelphia and San Francisco discussed how they're dealing with this issue in their respective cities, despite the current administration's stance and practices on affordable housing. There are things that can be done, or at least tried. The mayor's office has informed me of House Bill 2365, and I've contacted both Dr. Freeze and Ms. Powers-Handley for more information about the bill as well as its implications. A week after contacting them, I'm still waiting for a response. I follow national politics very closely. I'm aware of what's happening in general at HUD. I understand there's a national crisis of affordable housing. I'm living this reality. I'm here to ask once again, what is this community doing about it? And what is this city government doing about it? Mr. Mayor, I understand that you will not be running for reelection. I wish you all the best and thank you for your service to Tucson. You stepped in during difficult times and had difficult decisions to make. It seems Mr. Steve Farley will be running for the office, and perhaps some of you on the City Council are also considering a run. If so, I ask you to consider this issue and to address it when campaigning. I, for one, will be listening and watching and voting. I thank you for your time and attention.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Jay? No, no. I was going to ask you if you wanted to speak with that young lady at some point. Okay, thank you. We've got somebody here from the Southwest Fair Housing Council, ma'am, so he can touch base with you. Stephen Rankus? Is that what it is?
What is it?
Oh, it's a bill to give affordable housing state tax credit.
Good evening, Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Stefan Rankus, and I've been a resident of Tucson since 2004. This evening, I have a few little topics to bring up to your attention. First, the laws as a premise are both subjective, and enforcement of such is selective. Unlike Flagstaff and Phoenix, where you can ride a bicycle on the sidewalks, in Tucson, it is a violation. And I hold a bumper sticker, an old bumper sticker, where it says, "Give bikes five feet." So now, I understand the law is now three feet. You know, further encroachment. And some of the main streets, per se, Country Club, Broadway going north and south, have no bike trails at all. And also, Country Club, Fifth Street, from Country Club to Craycroft. You know, so that makes travel via bicycle very hazardous. It's not dangerous. Okay? Unless the consolation... The construction of the width of the bike trails, of the bike paths, is to a lot more space for the all-important automobile. Even the four-mile trial stretch of rails is called a streetcar. Okay? Now to the RTA. Current transit survey that's being conducted in place of the annual open houses that they've had in the past. They also, at the beginning of their five-minute questionnaire, they said, "This is anonymous." But the first question they ask is, "Where do you live?" As well as other personal questions. Those also gullible for... To be agreed to be in a monthly pass for a prize also have to give their name and phone number at the end. Although that is optional for the individual. RTA should already be aware of the demographics of the ridership and from their database of the economy patrons. Only two questions that they have, you know, pertain to changing or modifying any existing operations of RTA, public transit. Okay? Also... Also note that in Pima County, of the 28 branches, 26 of the 28 are managed by women. Also, in the U of A, the library system is very prohibitive of pornography on its public access. But yet, they have a statue of a naked female in front of their U of A main campus, library campus. Kind of interesting. Okay, now, the homeless contingent in Tucson is still prevalent and even transitory in its congregational gathering. So... But anyway, final note to you, Mr. Mayor. I have an inquiry that, would you be open if one were to invite you to a men's Bible study upon... At your convenience? And with that, I'll conclude.
I'm sorry, I did two of what, sir?
Men's... A men's Bible study.
Oh, okay. You send me an email.
All right. I will do so.
Thanks. All right. Jay, you're going to pass?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody else is on complete streets. Kathy Bell?
Good evening. My name's Kathy Bell. I'm a Tucson resident. I'm a board member for Feldman's Neighborhood Association, and I'm a Living Streets Alliance volunteer. I'm speaking, obviously, in favor of complete streets. Thank you for recognizing the need to make Tucson streets safer for all. The current rate of cyclist and pedestrian deaths is horrific. And it severely damages Tucson's reputation. Public safety, as well as attracting new business, is a reason to vote yes on complete streets tonight. As a longtime H.R. leader for a Fortune 500 company, I thought I'd share a couple of points that may get overlooked when trying to recruit businesses. Players know their demographics. Those demographics are getting younger, and they want to locate to cities that are attractive to their employees. Top-tier employers spend millions on health and wellness programs and commuter incentives. So locating in a city that provides safe, alternative commuting options while being conducive to healthy living is imperative. Adopting the Complete Streets ordinance is good for business and is a key component to Tucson's economic future. I facilitated several of the rethinking street sessions. We had diverse crowds. We had many that were naysayers when they started. But everyone agreed Tucson is car-centric, and it's time to make our roads safer for all. Three major concerns came up at every session. Safety for all. Speed. Drivers are going way too fast. They're encouraged to do so based on our current designs of streets and policies. Speed, combined with distracted driving, was a huge concern. Shade. In a city that sees temperatures 100 degrees or higher, shade is a huge concern and impacts all of us. Bus stops without shade protection are just inhumane. Once participants understood that complete streets solved a lot of their concerns, they supported the efforts. I heard strong community support for complete streets. During our sessions, we asked our participants to share their future vision of Tucson when complete streets was in effect. Here's what they said. Tucson's become a city who took a horrific statistic and turned it around. They took actions to keep the citizens and visitors safe on Tucson roads. There's an established place for pedestrians, cyclists, transits, and cars. This has fostered mutual respect. We have attracted top-tier employers. Our employees are excited to live in a vibrant, beautiful, and safe city. Our older population no longer fears crossing the streets, nor do they feel rushed to do so. If you're age eight through 80, our streets are safe for you. Our streets are filled with people walking, biking, sitting, and enjoying our beautiful environment. Our small local businesses are thriving from the additional foot traffic. Crime rates are down. We're out talking to our neighbors. We're interacting with them. Our streets are shady, and our sidewalks are complete. Our UA grads are staying here. They loved Tucson when they came to school here. They realize they can have a career and enjoy urban living at its finest. They can continue to enjoy Tucson. They can commute to work safely on foot and bike, or even on their solo wheel. They really don't want to have a car. So if this is the vision of Tucson that resonates with all of you, then vote yes tonight on complete streets. Let's put Tucson on the map. Let's make it the model of complete streets, not just in the Southwest, but across the nation. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Alexander Stoichat?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alex Stoichkov. I live in Tucson and am a landscape designer. I'm also a bicycle commuter and can attest to the importance of complete streets. I would like to provide a statement in support of the complete streets policy from a green infrastructure perspective. Green infrastructure is generally defined as practices that mimic natural systems to manage stormwater runoff. Our streets present opportunities for green infrastructure, which is part of the design concept behind a complete street. Green infrastructure is especially important in Tucson because of our climate, including monsoon rains that generate high volumes of runoff in a short amount of time and hot temperatures that intensify the urban heat island effect. Green infrastructure also improves pedestrian... The pedestrian experience by providing shade and aesthetic character. We need this in Tucson where canopy cover is only at 8%. Pedestrian safety is enhanced because vegetated areas help reduce the visual width of a street, which can act as traffic calming and encourage slower driving. Complete streets would bring incredible value to our community in many ways. We hope to have your vote in adopting a complete streets policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Annie Rempe?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Annie Rempe, and I'm standing here on behalf of my students at the Arizona School for the Deaf and Blind to support the complete streets policy. So last year, Living Streets Alliance helped me lead a workshop with an elementary class of students who are blind or visually impaired. And we asked them to imagine what Tucson would look like in five years after the policy was adopted. So tonight, I'm inviting everybody to just step into the mind of an eight-year-old with a visual impairment and go on an imaginary walk with me toward your future Tucson. You may close your eyes or simply imagine them closed. So our trip begins on an August afternoon at the intersection of ASDB's campus, which is west, now called West Slowway Boulevard, formerly known as Speedway, and North Grande Avenue. As we leave our school gates and approach the corner, we hear cars on Slowway Boulevard driving past, no longer feeling the hot wind from the fast cars pushing us back while we stand there. We now hear a very cleep... Clear beeping sound, letting us know exactly where to find the push button in order to initiate the crosswalk phase. Once the signal goes off for us to cross, we use our canes to follow a tactile guide strip on the ground that keeps us inside the crosswalk lines, no longer veering out into traffic. Once across Slowway Boulevard, we sweep our cane back and forth on a nice, smooth sidewalk, and we can hardly wait to get to the bus stop. For this bus stop has shade, a bench, a pole with Braille signage, air conditioning, a snack bar with food and water, and a candy store nearby. Just keep in mind, these are eight-year-olds with these ideas. So now come back to our own minds in 2019. So aside from the snack bar, air conditioning, and candy stores at every bus stop, I don't think the streets that my students imagined are a far-fetched reality. By duplicating wayfinding elements and bus stops that are uniform in design, we not only make them more humane and easier to locate, we are creating a more walkable, disability-friendly city with an identifiable bus culture. By changing the name of a street, we are prioritizing safety over speed so that we don't create more speedways in the heart of our cities. There are many stakeholders at play when designing our streets, and the complete streets policy has considered all of them in developing this policy. So with this policy, we... The city will... With this policy, the city will be guided toward becoming a safer place for all of our walkers, wheelchair users, cyclists, transit riders, and drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Maya Ingram?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me here. I will be brief. And in thinking about addressing you this evening, I thought, "There's a lot of hats I can wear." My family moved here in 1972, so I've seen a transformation of a city over decades. I'm a member of the pedestrian advisory committee. I served on the Complete Streets Task Force. But actually, I decided that tonight I would represent the University of Arizona College of Public Health and that in thinking about my expertise, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about community engagement. And since the time that you all directed your staff to go out and explore a complete streets policy, I have been aware of the efforts that your staff and community collaborators have made to engage folks. The things that I'm aware of are the fact that they reached out to organizations and community groups that have been working with... community groups that have been working with community members for a long time and asked their advice. They spent a lot of time thinking about how they'd go about it. They took community members and trained them up and sent them out all over the city to have conversations. They creatively came up with ways to engage with people that weren't necessarily thinking about this policy on the street and to ask them to reflect and think about it, and they did an iterative process where they came back and back again and took in more and more information, and that's not even including the task force where they really debated, debated the different elements and made sure that everything was there. So as a University of Arizona person, I'm not telling you to vote or not vote for a policy, but I will point out that what you vote for is something that many people in the city of Tucson have put their sense, their Tucson sense into developing. So you're voting for something that the city of Tucson has helped to develop with you, and I think that that's really important. And also going forward, that the efforts that you've made till today are the beginning, and thinking about how you devote resources to really engage the residents of Tucson and how Tucson looks going forward and making this policy as good as it potentially can be is in your hands. So just wanted to share that with you, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Amy Smith?
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Amy Smith. I'm a Tucson resident and I'm a small business owner. And I'm also a big fan of Living Streets Alliance. I'm here to share a success story about small business and complete streets. There's case study after case study showing that when complete streets elements are implemented, and when streets become safer and friendlier for walking, biking, retail sales go up, vacancies go down, and there are new jobs created. I've personally witnessed this at the intersection of the business that I own at XO Coffee. The approach here is called tactical urbanism, which is quickly transforming a public space through the use of lighter, quicker, cheaper materials such as paint, planters, posts, public seating, and more. We were personally concerned about the safety of this intersection, watching many small accidents, near misses of pedestrians and crosswalks, and cars either speeding through the stop sign or total confusion about the intersection in general. We were most concerned when we heard that a young man was hit in that intersection during a hit-and-run after his father came into XO to try to find out more information about the accident. Once at Miller's Surplus, a business across the street from us, I heard a grown man say to a grown woman, "Be careful crossing the street," when he came over to her, when she came over to her coffee shop. I thought that was pretty sad. But since we've painted this intersection and included outdoor seating and potted plants, I've noticed a lot slower traffic, more pedestrians in the general area, and more clarity about the four-way stop. I feel better about my child playing in front of my business, and I don't have to wave my hands in front of my head at the air each time across the street to slow down the traffic. I know I don't need to tell you that creating more places for people to convene contributes to the tax base. Vibrant streets also deter crime and discourages unsafe activities in our streets. This is all a huge bonus to us as small business owners and allows us to invest further into the future in our small business downtown. More importantly, the highlight of my day each day is seeing the power of pedestrians out in front of my business. The growth in the warehouse district on Sixth Avenue has been largely organic, and I think this is due to a street with great infrastructure in place, and that could be multiplied throughout our city. It includes good sidewalks, bike lanes, lots of shade, and a great intersection. Thanks to the work of Living Streets Alliance, the Tucson Department of Transportation, and the Complete Streets Task Force, I have seen the success in my neighborhood.
Gabriel Barias Longoria?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, my name is Gabriela Barias Longoria, and I am a native Tucsonan, and I am also a member of the City of Tucson Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I am Ward Two representative. I was also, it was a pleasure to be involved with the Complete Streets Task Force. I was involved, it was a three-year process, and it's really interesting to look back and reflect on all the work that we've done leading up to this moment. One thing that sticks out in particular is the rethinking streets workshops that another task force member mentioned earlier tonight. I myself conducted several of those with other members of the task force, and we reached out, and I personally reached out to Ward Two office, Paisanos Unidos, which is a group of undocumented or at risk of being deported individuals, small businesses like Petroglyphs and the Arts Community, Las Prometoras, our community health workers, and the Southside Neighborhood Association Presidential Partnership. And in these, in these community dialogues, it was really interesting to see reoccurring themes come up. Some of those have been incorporated into the policies and have made it to the guiding principles such as safety, accessibility, equity, and inclusivity. And as a, as a member of the pedestrian advisory committee, this is something that has come into several discussions here in this very room, and the fact that Tucson has been selected as a pedestrian safety-focused city by the Federal Highway Administration due to the high pedestrian fatalities in the nation, and on average, nearly 4,000 people were injured and 52 people were killed across all different types of transportation on our streets over the course of the years 2013 to 2017. And when we talk about mobility and accessibility, I wanted to point out these things that are also a part of, of the policy that you will hopefully be adopting today. So to have mobility is to have access. Getting to places necessary for living a healthy lifestyle at your job, school, doctor's office, community centers, parks, is possible. But living by a bus that comes once an hour isn't mobility, and owning a car in a city with congested streets isn't mobility either. So mobility isn't just having access to one type of transportation, but mobility is having transportation options and quality of those options. So as someone from, from a public health background who represents those folks who qualify for food assistance, particularly SNAP benefits, I was really happy to see that this policy focuses on equity and really advocating for our most vulnerable users, which are children, elderly, those with, people with disabilities, and, and folks who don't have options to live in a neighborhood that are likeable and walkable and safe. So with that, I hope you continue to be supportive and vision, and visionaries of this city. Thank you.
Jackie Bauer?
Hi, I'm Jackie Bauer, and I'm a recent transplant to Tucson, I moved here a year ago, and it's very clear to me as a bike commuter how much money, how much investment Tucson has already put into bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and I'm really excited to be a part of a community with those priorities. But I can also see how much is still needed. So when I learned that there was an effort to adopt a complete streets policy, I was very excited to get involved. And as a volunteer for LSA, I've been meeting with neighborhood associations, I've attended 12 neighborhood associations over the last two months to hear people's concerns, to talk to them about complete streets, and to kind of share, get their ideas and their comments on what it should look like and how it might affect their neighborhood. And I have been, well, I've heard lots and lots of different comments, universally, the response has been positive. But there are a couple of issues I wanted to point to specifically that, that were touched on by other speakers, but, but I think can sometimes get missed. So first, in addition to the health and safety and environmental effects of complete streets, a truly, a community that can truly has complete streets, it is tied to affordability. So to touch on the concerns of the very first speaker who talked, housing affordability is tied very much to how people have to get around, and I think that gets lost sometimes in the discussions about pedestrian and bike infrastructure. And then second, it is very much tied to aging in place. My own grandparents lived in a old house in a very walkable neighborhood until they couldn't keep up the house anymore and moved to an assisted living center where they couldn't walk anywhere. There were no sidewalks, there were no accommodations, and effectively, they felt trapped, and I think it deeply, it deeply declined their, the, or reduced the quality of their later years. So I think we miss that sometimes in our discussions of complete streets. So for many, those and many other reasons, I urge you to vote yes on this.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker on this will be Evran Sanmez.
Good evening, Mayor Rothschild and council members, my name is Evran Sanmez, and I'm
a program manager at Living Streets Alliance. I'm not here to address you as an advocate this evening. In other words, I won't be, I won't be talking about why complete streets make complete sense from a safety, health, equity, environmental sustainability, and economic development standpoint. I think we've already covered a lot of that in the ordinance that's in front of you today, thanks to the thoughtful work of our partners at TDOT and the Complete Streets Task Force. Instead, I'm here to share a few personal reflections. I moved to Tucson from Ankara, Turkey in 2005 to graduate school at, to go to graduate school at the U of A. I was in the planning program, so watching the mayor and council meetings on Channel 12 was what, was my favorite form of entertainment. True story. So Councilmember Scott may remember this, there was a gentleman named Michael Tony who attended every single council meeting and spoke during the call to the audience. He talked about Rio Nuevo projects, U of A Science Center, Buffalo Grass, 500-year floodplains, and especially had a lot to say about lasers. So I was captivated by this kind of public forum created at these meetings where any citizen could get up and talk about whatever issue was on their mind. As years passed, I gradually stopped watching Channel 12, and I started getting used to this model of local government and even began to take it for granted. Couple of years ago, I ran into Mayor Rothschild at a pizza place in my neighborhood. He was there to pick up a pizza after a mayor and council meeting. We chatted for a few minutes as we waited and then went off our separate ways. As I was walking home, it just hit me again how civilized it is that you can have a serendipitous encounter with the mayor of your city at a pizza joint in your neighborhood, how you can show up at a city council meeting and express your thoughts, and how unthinkable all of this would be where I came from. Just last week, I was two blocks down the street from that pizza place, which no longer there's by, there by the way, to get on the bus, as I sometimes do. And when I do it, it strikes me how uncivilized certain other things are here compared to where I came from. Crossing six lanes of traffic with a stream of cars traveling upwards of 40 miles an hour, waiting at a sorry little bus stop next to that same hostile environment, no buffer from the whizzing cars, no shelter from the sun. How undignified and almost humiliating, um, sorry, it is compared to my experience living in Turkey and getting around town. We can do better than that. And this policy is intended to ensure that we do, in fact, do better than that. It's meant to help us understand that our streets are precious public space, and they can do so much for us, connecting us to pizza joints, bus stops, schools, jobs, and to each other. Equally important, this policy is intended to ensure that all people, including people who never watched Channel 12 or even heard of the city council, have a voice in shaping what their streets look like. So let's adopt this policy tonight to make sure that our transportation network, along with our public engagement process around it, is as civilized as we all deserve it to be.
All right, that'll conclude. Call the audience, let's move on to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through C.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes, item B is elections, calling the 2019 primary and general elections as vote-by-mail elections. Item C is Industrial Development Authority, appointment to the Board of Directors of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Tucson.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the matters on the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on those matters? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Kozakic?
Aye.
Mrs. Romero?
Aye.
Items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Let's move to item eight.
Public hearing, zoning, C98762, Farnes Grant Road, C1, change of conditions and preliminary development plan, ordinance adoption, and amending ordinance number 9272, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 37, dated February 5, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request for property, locate the northwest corner of Grant Road and Swan Road. The applicant is proposing a Dutch Brothers Coffee Shop drive-through facility. Staff recommends approval of the requested change of conditions and adoption of the ordinance. Is an applicant or representative of the owner present? Could you come forward, sir? Could you state your name and your relationship to the owner?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Barack Beckett, 822 Studios, located at 340 South Convent Avenue, Tucson, Arizona 85701.
And what's your relationship to the owner?
I am the architect of Sage Group, who's locally talking with Dutch Brothers Corporation.
Is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna have you take a seat, be prepared in case necessary. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. I have one card here, so please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are paid speaker. And we do have one card from Ray Lemer, Lemer? Sir?
My name is Ray Lemer, I live at 4552 East Water Street. I'm representing myself, but also my two neighbors at 4546 and 4540, who couldn't be here. I talked to them about what we had discussed, and they had been at a few of the meetings with Mr. Barack. And we only have four items that we, that we want to make sure that they're put into the, into the contracts. There is gonna be an exterior speaker, that's, that was one of the things we worried about, and they said they would move it to the east side of the building, and we're on the west, west side. So that, that'll be broadcast out towards Walgreens and the, basically the intersection. So that is also at 55 decibels, which is, I guess, pretty quiet, and I understand the traffic is like 85, so it might just be drowned out by the traffic noise. Also, we'd like to have that speaker only on between 8:00 AM and 7:00 PM, if that's possible. And we'd also like the variance to go with that building only. There is another large building on that property that's been closed for five to six, seven years. It's old bollies, and we're not sure of the, of the owner's desire, or what their, what their plans are with that building, and it's such a, it's such a big building that if it, if there is an outside speaker out there, it would, might, it might be pretty bad. So I know that the, the speaker stays with the building, not the owner. So if they do move out of that building, the variance will stay with the building, that's what I understood. We, for it being with the owners, but I don't think that's legal or the right thing to do. But if, if all those, if all those are met, we, we don't have a problem with it. It would be nice to have a building open and business there, and hopefully, they might even add on to it in the future. I don't know if that's gonna be possible, but anyway, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir. Let me just check real quick, Steve, you might have it, but Scott, you wanna get up for a second? Is part, and I guess we could have the architect too, but get it from you, is the exterior speaker to the side that has been requested?
Your Honor, in the staff report...
Your Honor, in the staff report, it just talks about allowing an exterior speaker, and it doesn't, and it prohibits from being on a larger building. It doesn't mention what side that it's on. So I'd have to let Mr. Beckett respond.
The owners agreed to put it on the east and face it away from the neighborhood.
Okay. So that takes care of that. Is that correct? You confirm that?
Yes, we did. I can confirm.
Okay. And then I assume the variance runs with the land, correct?
With the parcel.
Okay.
And the bollies is a separate parcel. If any change of use on the bollies, we'll only, we'll have to go through a similar process.
Okay. And the only other request was what time the speaker was on from that you probably...
Actually, neighbors are the one that proposed that time, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And are you agreeable to that?
Absolutely.
And your clients agreeable to that? Okay. All right, write it in. Okay. Steve, you have anything else?
Yeah, so the outdoor speakers we've addressed, there were, there were concerns about the drive-through, just to address that, that the design allows for an 18-car stack. But also, if it exceeds that, it goes back into the parking lot, it's not going out on the Grant Road. So that's been addressed. The only question I had, and really is one of staff, and that is condition M, like mouse, restricts all lighting for the entire center to be high-pressure sodium shielded. Why aren't we allowing a future change to LED, shield LED if, if the shopping center elects to go with that?
Honorable mayor and council, I don't see why we would not allow a change in that condition.
So I would just suggest that item M, which restricts that entire center to high-pressure sodium, is overly restrictive and, and places us in a position of not allowing us to be flexible going forward in terms of advances in, in lighting technology, protection of dark skies and all that. So I would move that we adopt ordinance 11622 and, you know, we'll close the public hearing then.
All right.
I'll move to close the public hearing. How about that?
Got a motion and a close public hearing, any discussion on that matter? Hearing none, all in favor, close the public hearing, say aye. Aye. All right. Anyone opposed? I yield to Councilmember Kazachik.
With the conditions outlined that we discussed, and eliminating the requirement for high-pressure sodium and leaving flexibility in the, in the design of that shopping center for something more advanced going forward.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. I just want to be clear on this, this speaker. I know it's a small matter. 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So if I drive through at 7:00 a.m., no speaker? Or am I missing something?
If I may approach, is that it's, they do not have, technically have an order speakers in the operations?
Okay.
So it's everybody actually, all the, they have a people coming in, actually making your orders, and so therefore, they don't need it. Actually, they did have an exterior speaker, it was just simply for entertainment purposes.
Okay.
For that reason that they did not...
That makes sense. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear, so nobody comes back after the fact.
Absolutely, that was, yeah, discussed.
All right, you got it. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you both for coming, I appreciate it. All right, let's move on to item nine.
Your Honor, before we do move on with that, I do need to make a correction also to the ordinance. In section one of the ordinance that was distributed to council, the date was read as January 22, 2019. It's been corrected to today's date of February 5, 2019.
That's fine. All right, item nine.
Economic development authorizing a government property lease excise tax lease agreement for hotel to sale. This item has been continued at the request of staff.
Okay. Item 10.
Economic development authorizing a government property lease excise tax lease agreement for the Trinity Project. This item has been continued at the request of staff.
Item 11.
Transportation approving the City of Tucson Complete Streets Policy, report from city manager, ordinance number 11621.
City manager's communication number 38, dated February 5, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance 11621 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11621 relating to transportation authorizing and approving adoption of the City of Tucson Complete Streets policy.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Kazachik.
First of all, I want to thank all the participants in this very public process. It's been going on for a while. We've received a ton of really good input. When we, I don't know how many council offices hosted them, but I know several of us did. And we had a broad participation from within the community. Some of the things we've heard, we've also heard reiterated here tonight. Health, canopy cover, roadway design for something other than simply automobiles. This does not, these policies do not need to be budget busters. Protected bike lanes, dedicated transit lanes, neighborhood scale, commercial nodes. RTA buy-in is something that we need to, and we discussed at the study session, that we need to make sure that as we go forward with, with roadway design for our major corridors, Broadway, for instance, Grant, that we as the lead agency are the ones who are going to be able to implement these complete streets policies, and we don't get pushback the way we did on Broadway with some of the design components that we were advocating. Lane wits, ADA components, covered bus stops, bikes, peds, buses, factored into the complete design, accessibility. The fact that there's not one size that fits all in all areas of town, we're certainly not going to see the same sorts of design components out on Houghton Road as we are on Fourth Avenue. Speed limits and mitigation measures, hawks, flashers, four-way stops, wider sidewalk safety, the 8 to 80 Gil Penyalosa, design components, and Vision Zero. So we've had a lot of conversation about this. When we had this item in front of us, and this is for staff, two weeks ago or whenever we did, we, at the council level, raised several concerns about this, about the draft policy that's in front of us. Such as the composition of the citizen committee, discussion about including some of our boards, committees, and commissions in the discussions going forward as it relates to the actual design components, the selection process that this, for these... So, so what we have in front of us now is essentially what we had in front of us two weeks ago, and we haven't seen, we don't see any of the discussion points that we articulated two weeks ago in what we're voting on tonight. So I just want to make sure that as this process unfolds, that we're not going to be ignored when we talk about boards, committees, and commissions, and about the composition of the citizens committee, and about the fact that this needs to be something, this document needs to contain design elements, and isn't just some sort of 30,000-foot piece of fluff that nobody ever pays attention to. So if we vote to approve this tonight, what assurances do we have that as we go forward, that the comments that we made two weeks ago are going to be, are going to be reflected in a final product sooner rather than later?
Why don't we get either the manager or our transportation director? Mr. Manager?
So I believe it, part of the study session discussion, we outlined for you the process. There will be design guidelines, there'll be a variety of, of more conversations. This is the framework for those conversations. Your comments were heard loud and clear. They will be addressed, and if they can't be included, for whatever reason, we'll make sure we have that discussion as that process unfolds down the road. So to Councilmember Kazachik's point, your, your comments were heard, and they will be incorporated as we move forward.
Okay. I'll open it up for the rest, I'm sure others are going to want to comment.
Councilman Feimbrus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've received many letters and emails about the complete streets policy, and organizations, business organizations have questions and concern over the proposed policy. How will TDOT deal with concerns and questions raised by these organizations? And how will TDOT get them to be part of the process and working on the design manual for this?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Feimbrus, I'm familiar with some of the correspondence that's gone back and forth. Again, those comments are more specific to future design, design manual parameter, future design issues. They, they are part of the stakeholders group that'll be engaged, and so we'll certainly include them and, again, report to you in areas where there may be disagreements down the road.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Durham.
I just realized during our discussion of this matter that it's appropriate that I rode my bicycle to this meeting as, as a cyclist. And I believe that all users of our roads deserve equal safety. And so it's mostly for that reason that I favor complete streets, but for all the other reasons expressed, that call to the audience. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Romero.
I too, I just want to say, comment about the process and how this came about. You know, we've been working in the community, Living Streets Alliance, and all of the, the stakeholders that have participated, and those that haven't participated, those that have just sent letters or emails or calls, that intuitively believe that our streets are to be shared. And that for far too long, we've been designing streets specifically for car use. And that we need to make sure that as we move forward, that we're investing in our community, that we're thinking about mobility, as one of the speakers talked about, for all of us. For the mom that's pushing her stroller to the, to the bus stop, for the student that's riding the bike to Pima or to the U of A, to the senior who's taking the sidewalk to go to their park. Streets are to be used by all of us. And so I, I'm really happy that we're moving in this direction. We took this step a year ago, and that there is, that we, this conversation is not going to stop, right? That, that this issue is something that not just mayor and council are involved in, and not just pedestrian or bicycle enthusiasts, but that our entire community is going to participate in. And I think that's why it's so important to be able to have an action plan attached to this, so that we continue talking about. And this, and this document should be a living document, that businesses and developers and, and neighborhoods and groups like Living Streets Alliance and elected officials like us should continue to have these conversations to make sure that we can adjust, that we can move together, that we're not forcing an issue upon anyone, that it's something that we all believe in. And so I'm really happy to be able to have this in front of us and, and hopefully get to vote on it today and then see the action, right? See things happening to make sure that we have safe connections and, and a safer community.
Okay, anybody else?
Sorry, anybody else?
Just for staff to clarify, so, so that everybody knows, what are the next steps in, when do you think we're going to actually see a series of design manual criteria that we can vote on?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Diana Alarcon, Transportation. We have committed to be back before you in 90 days with the framework of the council, the coordinating council that we spoke about. And we are making a commitment to be back before you in September with the actual design manual, based on also having community input as well.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. I'd move that we pass the ordinance 11621.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Mrs. Romero.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Feimbrus.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Ordinance 11621 passes by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. Adjournment.
Council stand adjourned. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Wednesday, February 20th at 5:30 p.m.